Call to order the April 11th, 2024 Planning Commission City of Louisville meeting. With a roll call, please.
Krishna Bangs.
Present.
Krishna Choi.
Here.
Krishna Baskett.
Here.
Krishna Mullane.
Here.
Krishna Mahaly.
Present.
Krishna Hunt.
Here.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Here. Thank you. With that, I would request a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Still moved?
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hearing no dissent, motion carries. Are you in the, is somebody in a position to re, to review with us the revisions to the February minutes? I should have asked you for that.
Yeah, I should have called them out better. The only revision was there was a number, I don't have them in front of me, but there was a, it was, Rob actually had a quote that for the EV charging, there was an increase of 25%, and it was written as 2,500, and it was you that brought it up. That was the only correction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a square footage. It was an error in what the, what the ordinance was. It's, I mean, it's on page three of 11. As written, you have it corrected.
Okay, yeah. That's, that's the only correction.
Great, all right. Thanks. With that then, I would request a motion to approve the February minutes with revisions.
So moved?
A second?
Second.
Thank you. I should, I guess, roll call. I think we can do it verbal. All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or not present? No? Great, thanks. Motion carries. Public comment for items not on the agenda? Can somebody double check the Zoom just to be certain? Okay, great. Seeing nobody with raised hands, we'll move into our new business. First item of new business. And who's actually gonna rep, do you want to just speak to it? Since Matt's not here.
Yeah, there, there's no staff presentation, but basically what's happened is after the public notice went out, this is for a proposed drive-through coffee restaurant. I forget, forgot the address. 535 East South Boulder Road. Some issues surfaced after the public notice went out that necessitate a continuance to the next hearing. So that's our recommendation is to do just that.
All right. So then a motion to continue Resolution Three Series 2024 regarding a recommendation to City Council RPUD for a potential drive-through coffee restaurant at 535 East South Boulder Road. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move. Could you?
Thank you.
Continuation.
Yeah, okay, great. And a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. And a roll call, please.
Krishna Bangs.
Approved.
Krishna Choi.
Yes.
Krishna Baskett.
Yes.
Krishna Mullane.
Yes.
Krishna Mahaly.
Yes.
Krishna Hunt?
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Yes.
Can I just put on the, on, just remind?
Actually, we have to mention the date too, May 9th, 2024. Go ahead.
I just want to remind the chair that I will be absent at the May 9th meeting.
May 9th, okay, thank you for letting us all know. Appreciate that. Just as a side note, as we move into this next discussion item, so just for everybody to understand, if you're gonna be absent, yeah, just let the whole commission and staff know, staff liaison at that point now. We don't have to tell people that we're gonna be there unless, unless we're nervous about it and we send out a specific question asking people, hey, something's going on, we're all getting fevers or something, and there's a last minute like punt to that question, but otherwise, the expectation is that you're here in person. So that also goes, if you're gonna be attending by Zoom, to let everybody know, and staff liaison, so. So we all know the same info at the same time. Thanks. Moving into our next item. Yep, all you. And so this will be a fairly open-ended conversation once we get into it all. If that's how you're envisioning it, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to provide some structure to the conversation, but yeah, I've got about a 15-minute presentation, just kind of walking you through the housing plan. And basically, the, it's optional for you tonight. If you'd like to take, make a recommendation to City Council, you're not required to. This isn't within your real house specifically in terms of it being a zoning code amendment, or the comprehensive plan, or even a comp plan amendment, but we're basically asking you, it's your choice if you want to make a vote of recommendation one way or the other, or just provide input for us before going to City Council. So, but I'll walk, I'll walk you through all this if that's okay. Yep.
Right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so Jeff Hurt with Community Development. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is to share the draft of our first housing plan. So like I said, the purpose of tonight is not necessarily for y'all to make a recommendation, although you're welcome to, but this is to get input from you all prior to going to City Council for consideration of adoption on May 7th is what it's scheduled for. So the topics I'm gonna cover in about a 15-minute-ish presentation, I know you just sat through a long presentation, I'll try to be concise, because there's a lot to cover here. The topics I want to cover are first, just a project overview, particularly recognizing we've got a few new planning commissioners, and giving a little bit of background on the project itself. Also wanted to communicate to you all some of the related efforts the city has undertaken in, in recent years, kind of building up to the housing plan and parallel to it around housing affordability, and kind of give a nod to those. I wanted to orient you to the document itself. It's dense, it's heavy, there's a lot in there, so I wanted to just orient you to the structure of it and how to even digest all of it. And I'm not gonna get into the content too much of this, of the plan, but I did want to highlight some of the goals and strategies and actions that are in the plan, and particularly how it, how it could or should integrate with the comprehensive plan that's coming up. So project overview, particularly again for the new planning commissioners, the city was awarded a grant from the state in 2021 to do this housing plan. We had to put the project on hold due to the Marshall fire and picked it back up middle part of last year. We had Eco Northwest as our consultants on the project, so they produced the plan. They're nationally known experts on housing plans and this type of work. They're actually working with the Denver Regional Council of Governments right now on a regional housing needs assessment, so they know our market really well. Some of the milestones for this project, Planning Commission has seen this three times, to my knowledge at least, going up into November of 2023, and I'll mention kind of a recap of that meeting for you all that were there. City Council's heard it multiple times, I forget the exact dates. We've had two public open houses on this project last year, both were well-attended and offered us a lot of good feedback. And then we had a host of focus group meetings around specific topics, affordable housing providers, things of that nature, late last year. So there's a lot of input that went into this development of this plan. I did want to give a nod for those not familiar to some of the efforts the city has already undertaken around housing affordability. We needed to do this housing plan, and I'll talk about that in a minute as sort of a strategic framework, but we've done a fair amount as a city. Starting in 2017, we committed to a 12% goal as part of Boulder County Communities Regional Housing Partnership, 12% of our housing stock to be permanently affordable, and that was adopted by Resolution in 2017 by council. We also adopted Inclusionary Housing Ordinance in 2021. That's where 12% of new residential, most new residential, has to be set aside as permanently affordable. We last year, late last year, opted into Proposition 123, which some of you may be familiar with. It opens us up to be eligible to receive funds as part of that ongoing state funding source that is just now getting started. So there was a, there was a, a housing affordability goal that we had to commit to as part of that, so that was an important step for us. And then lastly, I wanted to highlight, actually within the last month, City Council approved an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County to sort of share resources around the administration of affordable housing programs for the smaller communities, so like Erie Lafayette, Louisville Lions, the communities that don't have housing staff or part of an IGA now to help administer some of this stuff. So this is, like I said, I think a really important plan for the city. I wanted to highlight why we're doing it and why it's important. It's really the first of its kind. We don't really have a comprehensive strategy addressing housing affordability in Louisville. So it's an important step for a number of reasons, and I'll highlight a couple of them. One, you know, you want the policy foundation. If we're gonna be writing new rules, making land use decisions, developing work plans, you want this policy foundation. But also when it comes to funding opportunities, I think it's important to note that as we, or affordable housing providers request Prop 123 funds, or things of that nature, state, federal, local funds, they look to the city to see that they have this type of policy foundation and say like, City Council supports this, this is what we want to do. It's an important step for funding opportunities and a number of other things. So I also wanted to note that it does align and sort of promote other city goals related to sustainability, social equity, transportation, historic preservation. So it syncs up pretty well with a lot of other city goals, and that's further explained in the, in the actual plan. So you last, Planning Commission last heard the housing plan or discussed it back in October, November. You had two back-to-back meetings, if you recall, those were here, that were here. At that time, just to give you a visual refresher, we dumped a bunch of information on you, 30 potential action items. It was essentially the framework for the document that's before you tonight. The feedback was supportive and positive. None of these action items were opposed, not much was added to it. The feedback was generally better organize these, figure out how to prioritize them better, consolidate them to some extent, so it actually becomes a more actionable document. At a high level, some of the key themes from the feedback from Planning Commission were general support with the idea of promoting more residential development in certain locations, more housing types in the city, the types of things that are in the housing plan, we heard general support for from Planning Commission. So to orient you to the document, it's dense, I know, there's a lot in there, there's a lot of data. Each sentence could be scrutinized and it's heavy, but the structure of it is, we try to keep things as concise as possible in an executive summary to give you a snapshot of what the plan actually says. There is a Housing Needs and Market Assessment abbreviated version in the main part of the plan that's supplemented by the full version as an appendix that does the deep dive and all the methodologies and all the data and all that. There's a brief section on housing goals. The meat of the document is in the Strategies and Actions section, which is where we lay out the strategies and actions that'll walk us through. So just to give you a visual, we definitely are mindful, the fact that this, as a heavy document, needs to be digestible. So if you need, you know, if you want to read all 54 pages in detail, that's awesome. If you want just a snapshot of what the action items are and what the goals are, there's really only two or three pages that you can flip to that are up on the screen here that give you that snapshot, and all the details are underneath it. So there's a ton of findings, data and otherwise in the plan. Wanted to highlight a few just to bring it to the forefront. Median home price in Louisville is about $900,000 now, which means that only about a quarter of Louisville households can actually afford the median house price in Louisville, despite having some of the highest incomes in Boulder County. Also about a quarter of Louisville residents and households are cost burden, which means that they're paying over 30% of their income, household income toward housing costs. Our incomes are rising faster than Boulder County as a whole, but our housing prices are rising faster as the county as a whole. So that trajectory is just sort of pronounced in Louisville. Of note, and I'll touch on this here in a minute, and this may have some discussion. In more recent years, our population and housing unit count has actually plateaued and declined. Since 2017, we've gone down a bit. Pre-Marshall fire, we've gone down a bit in population and housing units and school enrollment, so interesting data points. I wanted to put this up on the screen too, just to highlight what I think is an interesting graphic in the report. If you see this through the lens of workforce housing, which a lot of people do, just to show how pronounced this issue is, this chart breaks down typical incomes by occupation and what they could afford, and really just highlights that even folks that are well into six figures, engineers, nurses, firefighters, dentists aren't able to afford typically a home in Louisville with that $900,000 price point. So wanted to address the, the population and housing unit assumptions, and we can come back to this if you'd like. But first wanted to say, first and foremost, this plan is not about setting targets or aspirational goals for new housing units or population numbers. That kind of discussion is better housed in the comprehensive plan. So just to be clear, that, this plan does not do that. It's really about, and what we tried to articulate in the plan, just sort of an objective look, that basically if we maintain our current share of housing units and population relative to the county, out 20-plus years, based on the projections for the county, what would our number be? And so that number's about 2,500 new housing units. That doesn't mean, again, that's a goal or a target. That is the methodology, and that's what Eco Northwest did to show that's what we would need, which is far beyond what we're zoned and have currently to accommodate, which is a nuanced discussion we could, we could have certainly. The last thing I wanted to say on this front was, so I think, you know, it's, it's tempting, and we're welcome, if you want to go there, happy to do that. It's tempting to get, really dive into that needs assessment, look at the methodology, look at the sources, really pick apart, is this the right number? How far off are we? I think it's important to note that the goals and strategies and actions in this plan, I think, hold true regardless of what that specific number is. It could be off, maybe not wildly, but it could be quite a bit off, and I think these, these, everything kind of holds true in this report from our perspective as staff and Eco Northwest. So some of the needs identified in the plan, there's a short section on it, but we need a more diverse housing stock. I believe about 70% of our housing units are single-family detached, which are obviously the most expensive ones. Our population is aging faster than other Boulder County communities, so senior housing is certainly a priority and something we're deficient on. When you talk about younger residents and younger families, they're increasingly being priced out of Louisville, so rental and homeownership opportunities for those folks. Income restricted units, that's where we have permanently affordable deed restricted units. That is a need and certainly not something the market is gonna deliver without some sort of intervention. And then again, back to the local workforce, kind of seeing how pronounced that is, housing for those folks that are serving the community. I think about this graphic right here, and I think about the folks who are working and maybe wanting to live in Louisville. There's all kinds of tangential things around commute patterns and things of that nature, but when you talk about the workforce, housing options for those folks is.
So is there, is there a number as it relates to area median income, median income? Workforce, the workforce?
That's not, that's not something that we've defined necessarily, that it relates to, I mean.
So, so.
Yeah.
So, so sometimes, you know, 120 to 140% in our market could be considered workforce housing, that they can afford it, that median income, that percentage of median income. But I think part of the, that bullet point too is, we hear from our service businesses, as well as our high-tech businesses, that they have trouble getting workers and recruiting workers because of the cost of housing. So even if it's a restaurant worker, they're having issues getting workers, because there's just no, you know, they, they live so far away to find affordable housing. Our high-tech companies that are hiring, you know, $100,000 plus annual salaries are also struggling to recruit. So it's an economic development issue for the city, as well as a kind of inclusiveness issue for the city.
But ultimately, it's, it's about affordability. Housing that supports workforce.
Yeah, so it's the workforce, yes. We need housing that can be affordable to the workforce, and it's nuanced. It's, there's, we, you know, we should be an inclusive community where if you're trying to start a young family and you're a two-teacher income, for example, that would be great if we had a homeownership opportunity for them. I think we're the type of community that wants to support that. How do we do it in this environment? And I think that's what we're trying to get at. Because it's maybe 15 years ago, a two-teacher salary could afford a house in Louisville. I think that would be almost impossible at this point.
Yeah, definitely, yep. Thanks.
Okay, so let's see. Wanted to highlight community input real quick. Like I said, we had two open houses and focus groups. Generally reinforced the need to address this issue. There was no one that was saying we don't need to address this issue. And really, we heard from the community general support for the idea of more diverse housing types, looking at more residential in areas like the McCaslin Corridor, for example, where you have underutilized land. I'm happy to circle, circle back to this. So the document itself, the simple way to look at it, another simple way to look at it is there's three goals, and I'll mention what those are here, and there's three strategies that are tied to those goals, and then each of the 13 action items kind of are embedded in those strategies. That's sort of the hierarchy that we're looking at in this document. The three goals are simple, and they're measurable, which is a good thing. First being increased residential development. We mentioned the 2,500 housing unit, whether or not that's the right number. Our zoning capacity, to my knowledge, and I think we've done some analysis recently, is only something like 400 units could be entitled. So we're way beneath in terms of a zoning capacity standpoint. So increased residential development in Louisville, expand access to affordable housing. That's mostly or more referring to permanently affordable deed-restricted type of affordability. And then the third goal, diversify our housing stock. I mentioned that 70% of our housing units are single-family detached. More diversity of choice will tie into price point and options. So the strategies that sort of are based on those goals are, one, policy and zoning code changes targeted to reduce barriers. And so those are summarized in the plan in more detail. I think there's something like four or five actions within that, that strategy. These are intended to be the more near-term, sort of concurrent with the comprehensive plan or shortly after items that we see as, I would never say low-hanging fruit, but more tangible, like things that like, you know, we, we feel confident we could tackle sooner than later without the policy direction of the comp plan. So we're already moving forward with addressing ADUs, for example, here soon. That's an example of what's in this Strategy One. Strategy Two is all about funding opportunities and leveraging partnerships, lots of tools to explore within that strategy. And then Strategy Three is really distinguished from Strategy One in that they're also policy and zoning code type changes, but more comprehensive, more big picture, more post-comprehensive plan, longer-term type of changes, where we're looking at, you know, changing how we do development review, being more predictable, things like that, that require much bigger discussions and are nowhere near low-hanging fruit. So longer out, kind of further on the horizon, strategies, actions.
Can I ask a question here real quick? Before you go on to those specific, so both on these three strategies and the three goals that were presented, they're listed as Strategy One, Two, and Three, and Goal One, Two, and Three. Is that intended to indicate an order of precedence?
No, it's a good question. Thought about not numbering them, honestly, but.
So the reason I ask, right, I see on this particular page right here, Strategies One and Three as precedent to Strategy Two. Unless we have policy zone changes and policy zoning code changes, you know, trying to leverage funding opportunities is moot if we can't allow whatever we get funded for. You know, on the previous slide, you know, it talks about residential development as Strategy One, and then it talks about kind of the right, or the, you know, affordable housing or workforce housing, and, you know, maybe it's a question of like having the appropriate wording in the right order as it's presented, because it, it does present it as kind of a linear approach.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point, and, and, you know, we're not tied to numbering them, and I could see how that would create some confusion. So we could look at prefacing sections by saying this is not prioritizing, or we could remove them altogether. I mean, there's only three of them. I think that, you know, those of us that drafted this probably had a fixation on having number and order to things, but if there's only three, and it creates confusion, yeah, be open to that. Yeah, it's a good point.
Thanks.
And then I'll just show the visual of the, we definitely had a goal of getting all the actions and the strategies on one page, so, so one can open up in 11 by 17, and that is sort of the blueprint for which other things are, are referenced off. But the way this table is set up, everything is summarized at a high level based on which housing goals it addresses. Our best guess, or our consultant's best guess, at the housing unit production that way it would yield, and the little icon with the houses. Level of effort in terms of resources, cost, and timeline. Near term being one to two years, midterm, I think, two to three years, long term, five-plus years. So it gives you a sense of the horizon of this plan. And just another visual, so each of the action items gets a deeper dive in subsequent sections based on that table, where the rationale and the description of it is provided, and some other factors. Some of them are so detailed that they have their own tables of specific sort of subactions that would take place within that bucket, again, with the idea of consolidating things. So happy to go into each one of these actions, but we didn't think, it'd be a bit much to go through all 13 of them. I've just got a couple more slides here. So integration with the comprehensive plan, that was important to note. So you all are aware that that's ongoing. We're coming to you next month with a comp plan update. Certainly, our vision is that any goals and strategies that come out of this plan would be embedded in the comp plan. It's almost become sort of the housing component of the comp plan. It's a huge benefit because, you know, absent this resource from the state, we wouldn't have been able to do this deep of a dive with the comp plan on such an important issue. So the goals and strategies will be reflected and kind of rolled into the broader goals and strategy of the comp plan. But I also wanted to highlight some of the, how the action items from the housing plan could sort of live on in the comp plan, and they are kind of teed up in the housing plan, or at least we tried to. One being the idea of looking at land use changes from, say, commercial to residential, that's called out in the housing plan, but it isn't, say, location. That's more of a comp plan discussion to make sure the community's involved with that conversation. Same thing with densities and heights, that's called out in the plan to look at, but not assigning location. That's sort of like where it crosses over into the comp plan territory. So we expect to continue those action items with sort of geographic-specific recommendations to ask the community as part of the comp plan. And then we'll probably use the comp plan to refine a lot of the zoning code options. Yes.
Maybe you'll get to this, or maybe I missed it. How does the timeline for the finalization of this housing plan relate to the comp plan? We've heard about the comp plan and that timeline, where, at least I'm more familiar with, but I haven't heard what the, and maybe it's open-ended, but, but what is the proposed timeline for the housing plan and the adoption thereof?
It's a great question, and, and we think it's an opportune time, actually, if this moves forward according to schedule. So if this is adopted, of course, that's an if, by City Council in May, that's right around the time where our consultant team is developing future land use scenarios and developing the content that we're gonna have at our next round of community engagement. So it actually dovetails really well, right into where that analysis is done, where there'll be conceptual future land use maps development, you know, for community input that are based on the housing plan, if that makes sense. Okay, I think I just got a couple more, and then we wanna hear what you have to say, certainly. So next steps. City Council is considering adoption on May 7th. And then, once adopted, you know, it will dovetail into the comp plan certainly as we discussed, but the way the actions are framed, and we hope in a user-friendly way, this can guide a lot of our work planning as city staff and as the city manager figures out how to allocate resources, and around our housing decisions. The goals can be really valuable for us as we're evaluating different land use decisions. Zoning code changes, development review proposals, things of that nature. So we're hopeful it gets used for that purpose. And we already talked about the comp plan. So this is the last slide. So our, for tonight, our request is at minimum for your input questions, certainly, to inform going to council, adjustments, refinements to the plan to take to council, but we're sort of asking you or putting it on you if you'd like to make a formal recommendation to City Council. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and fire away with questions and comments.
Thanks. I guess initially, I'd like to kind of poll people to see if in advance of discussing any of this, whether we feel like we're gonna want to make a recommendation one way or another. Sure, yeah.
Can we talk a little bit about what that actually means? Like.
It just, yeah, absolutely, yes. It means like, we like what we see, and we think that City Council should adopt it. That's my belief of what it means.
So understood, but are there, are there?
Yeah.
Are there any other implications beyond what you just said? I guess is what I'm asking, which I don't think so, but.
Not that I'm a.
Yeah, and.
Reminder.
It's, it's, like I said, it's not codified that you would vote on this, but, you know, if you did want to make the recommendation, it just, it could represent a more coherent communication of your position on things versus individual input, but it's however you want to do it, we'll, we'll take it however, yeah.
And I guess another way to ask it, there's no procedural impact here, whether we recommend it or not?
No, they're, they're hearing it on the 7th, or they're, they're evaluating it on their terms. So yeah, it's no, just our saying, yes, we do or don't believe in it, so. So I, I think that should be our goal, so. So I think that should be our goal, so thoughts?
I would like to make a recommendation to city council. I think that because of this tie-in to the comprehensive plan, it's important to show that the planning commission is bought into it.
Great, good, good.
Can I ask a couple more questions about just the overall, everything where we are with this?
Sorry, just ones before we... Oh, so just, like, process?
Hmm, no.
Not quite exactly, more content?
Actually, questions as well.
For process or for...
Just what's in the...
In his presentation?
In the presentation, yeah.
Did you have one another thought? Did you, Commissioner Moline, have a thought on the recommendation?
I completely agree that I would also recommend that we try and get to the point...
Come to something, okay, great, thanks. All right, yeah, so then why don't we start?
Yeah, and I agree, I just, I'm sorry, Commissioner Basket had said you recommended that we do develop a recommendation. I just wanted to say I'm in support of figuring out if we want to have a recommendation.
Right, yeah, 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 no, no, that's what we're all saying, yes.
Let's eat grandma with the comma, you know?
Right, yes.
Just a couple of questions for you. So the very first sentence of the executive summary of the housing plan says, "The purpose of the document is to outline a strategic and actionable plan for the city to address the future housing needs of Lewisville." And just a general question, should this go to council? Should they adopt the plan? There's a statement just now that talked about that would inform the work plan for staff. Is staff, like, do you all currently have the resources available? If council says, "We're all in, we adopt it, let's get all of the different..." I'm sorry, however many there were, 29 actions and three strategies and three goals, you know, "Let's get this stuff done." Are you all prepared and able to have that strategic and actionable plan?
It's, I mean, it's a good question. A lot of this is resource-heavy, certainly. When I mention informed work plans, what I'm thinking of as an example specifically is there's some discrete zoning code changes recommended in here, right? And so if you all in city council, you know, adopt this, that gives us clear sort of marching orders that we as staff, you know, should prioritize that and take on those, you know, as a special project, to the extent the resources allow, yeah.
Thank you, that's good. And of that, right, kind of this wholesale adoption of this plan, while you specifically said you didn't necessarily want to have an order of precedence in terms of the goals or the strategies or the actions, what is that, what is that in terms of how it's laid out in the plan? In terms of what's first, what's next, what's later, as opposed to just everything, everything everywhere all at once?
Yeah, they're, so they're all laid out by the near, mid, and long term. So we would obviously look at the near-term ones first. And by the way, all of these, you know, you need to do a deep dive on each one of these, right, and evaluate further. Some of them, like frankly, you could evaluate and analyze, conclude that there's, you know, there's nothing we can do or nothing we should do. So the idea is probably to look at the near-term ones, figure out which ones have the most legs, and bring those forward to the extent resources allow. That's not to preclude us from picking and choosing things out of the mid and long term, for example. So there could be things in the long term from a zoning code perspective, for example, that, like, we feel as staff and embedding it with you that, like, could bump it up to the near term. So it's not a scientific, like, this is precisely what we're going to do, but it's an important starting point, yeah.
Thank you.
Got a couple of questions. So I think you said we have zoning to support 400 additional units currently. And we need to, if we were to maintain the 6% share for the county, we would need to build something like 100 per year, just slightly under 100 per year. Can you tell me, pre-martial fire, what was the net new addition rate in Lewisville? Do we have an average? Just to give some context to what 100 units per year looks like compared to previous growth?
Yeah, yeah, Robbie, mate.
Yeah, I think we, if you go into the housing needs assessment, I think we have that data somewhere, but I don't have it, I'll look for it. I would say that anecdotally, and I don't, it's not going to answer your question exactly, but up until 2017, when we were building out Steel Ranch and North End, we were building dozens and dozens of houses on the heavy years. I don't know if we reached 100 in a year, but it was a lot. Since 2017, it's really been, notwithstanding the Marshall Fire, less than 10 a year, maybe even five a year sometimes, kind of, you know, it wasn't a lot. So it's, you know, you might have one project, though. If you're looking at an average, it doesn't mean that we're maybe going to build 100 per year, but if you look over a 10-year period, we might get a couple of projects on the books and build 300 or 400 units in two different projects, for example, verse kind of spreading out that 100 per year over 10 years.
Okay, so it's very significant compared to previous growth?
I think it's more growth than we've probably seen in a while, if you average it out. It's not unprecedented in the city. So in the late 80s and 90s, we were, you know, doing several hundred per year for many years to get from, you know, when we were a city of 4,000 or 5,000 people, and we went up to 15,000 people in about a 10-year period, we were going at a quicker rate. But if you look at the last 10 years, it would probably be more similar on average. But let me see if I can look up the actual numbers for you.
You've given us, yeah, the context, the range. I have a second question, Jeff. Not to get too specific, but on page 31, Action 1 dot 1, there's a statement in here that says, "Comprehensive plan in 2013 was beneficial in some ways, but zoning did not implement the vision." So, which I understand, but as this goes forward and becomes the housing plan, it would be good to obviously make it perhaps a little more rigor and robust that the plan is adopted rather than ignored. I mean, am I reading that right, that it was essentially ignored or overlooked?
Yeah, I mean, obviously can't speak to the 2013 plan, but, you know, I know a lot of the land, the future land use kind of scenarios and aspirations did not change the comp plan. So I go back to the McCaslin corridor, it was commercial, it stayed commercial, despite, I think, it being contemplated in the 2013 plan to make some changes. That's, that could be, generally, maybe something like that is what it's referring to. But with this plan, I mean, I think we're, you know, again, not knowing what happened 10 years ago, but this is a very, like, assertive, methodical approach to getting something like that as a policy. If you have a housing plan that calls for something explicitly, city council adopts it, and then you have a subsequent comp plan that builds off of that and explicitly calls for it, and city council adopts that, you know, ultimately, it's up to city council, but that's our goal, is to make it, like, very grounded in data and analysis and community input and give it as much momentum so that actually happens, yeah.
On that thought, I would observe that a lot dies in process. And so I think what happened was the comp plan of 2013 envisioned these area plans and then neighborhood plans. There was change in staff, there was change in council, and so we didn't, we never saw anything. That comp plan did not inform changes to code. And this is acknowledging that and saying that goes from the housing plan to the comp plan to staff work on code. So, yeah. Commissioner Basket, you at one point were... Any other... Yeah, 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 let's jump into content, and, yeah. As far as content goes, if we don't have anybody with giant, long lists of burning priorities, we can just kind of jump around, we can begin to jump around, swim in this pool a little bit and see where it goes, and then if we need to, we can focus.
I have a question that may lead to other...
Great, yeah.
Thank you for reminding me. So the extra 2,438 housing units by 2047, if I'm reading that right, that's based off of additional 4,115 residents? That's about 1.6 bedrooms or so per unit? Or what are the assumptions regarding the size of the additional units? And how are those... What did you assume to get that number is really what I'm asking?
Yeah, I'd have to look at it precisely. In our Eco Northwest, our consultants did that based on sort of the best practice for how to make these calculations. But I believe, and I have to verify this, I believe that it's the population number, and then you look at the census, persons per household, and that ties to the housing unit, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's a national, excuse me.
I'm the same issue.
Yeah, a national average or a typical scaling rule that's applied?
We have a local average, so the census and the census data that we get for Lewisville has our own unique household size for different types of housing units. So they can get data on single-family houses, apartments, multi, you know, other types of, like, row homes and attached. Well, we can actually pull data for those different housing units for Lewisville.
And I saw that, there's a table, Exhibit Two on page 160, and the vast majority is two bedrooms, so it's already higher than the 1.65. So I guess I'm poking at a few things. Is that the right number to use for Lewisville is the crux of it? Because that obviously weighs heavily into the, you know, the number of pacing and the number of developments.
So, right, I think if we were building, if our housing plan called for building all single-family houses, we'd probably have something like 2.4 people per household.
Yeah.
But our plan calls for more multifamily and attached, which tend to be lower household sizes, so there's fewer people per unit in the calculation, I assume. I don't know the backing numbers either.
Yeah, we could, and we can look into that as we're talking here, but I'll pivot back to my statement too, that, you know, again, these aren't targets or aspirations, but, and we also think that the goals and the strategies and actions hold true, even if those numbers, we use different assumptions, yeah.
And since we're on the topic of housing type, I guess I'll make a comment, and I think it's more relevant to the comp plan, and you can affirm that, but in case we forget later or we miss, but, you know, in terms of diversity of housing, I think a recommendation somewhere of having a diversity of housing options in a given development might also be a good idea, for a number of reasons, avoiding sprawl, you know, being more in line with what we think we're, you know, the character of our community is. So I'm guessing that's something that would probably be better suited in the comp plan, is that?
Yeah, in terms of, yeah, there is a recommendation in here, I forget how it's framed. It's essentially for larger sites or your greenfield sites, where you have a lot of units, there should be a diversity of housing units within that development.
I think it is, but when I read it, it was, it wasn't clear to me that it was within the same... Like, across all of the portfolio of developments, you could have different types of developments, but I'm talking about in a development itself, having a range of options, not just having the entire thing be single-family, mixing some townhomes or some multifamily units in there, I think, would be a good thing to include. So I guess I'm bringing it up because it is sort of in there, but I'm not sure it's... The wording is not exactly what I'm suggesting, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Well, so clarify, well, the comp plan, you know, would address something like that in terms of a location-specific recommendation, where you say, you could define a land use that says, whatever, it says, large-scale residential development or something. And then, and then within that, yeah, 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 so that could live in the comp plan. But help me understand how this document, maybe clarify...
I think maybe the language, similar to what you described, I can't find the table.
It's a concern that it's calling for just little islands of one type, of kind of monotype.
And if it's a small development...
Understandable, but...
But if it's a large development...
We want to allow for the thought that a larger development could...
You should have the diversity of the housing option within that single development. Instead of just saying, yeah, this one is all this type, this one is this type, this one's this type. So technically, as written, we've achieved the action.
Right.
But I'm saying, I think we would be better suited if we encouraged a diversity of housing types in a given large-scale development. And we, I don't think we should set limits on what that means, like, oh, above 10 houses or whatever, but...
Speak to it, though.
The spirit of the action, I think, should be, you know, diversity of housing in a given, you know, in a single development. If it's all, if you're going to plot it all at once, let's think of that for a single development.
If the opportunity is there to encourage that diversity of housing within a development.
Okay. Look at some language...
Yeah, so I think just adding language, you know, so that diversity of housing, but including diversity within a single large...
Within one development, yeah, 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 okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sort of like the old, what we used to call Stapleton, just not Central Park, where you have lots of different diverse types of housing in one development. Maybe we could do it better than some, like, thinking of Palisade Park where I rented briefly after the fire, that, I don't think that was done very well, but I see what you're saying.
Commissioner Moline?
I was just going to say, it looks like it's in Action 3.3, when they're talking about greenfield, which I, I'm just trying to make sure, Commissioner Haley, that I'm, that I'm...
Give me a moment, and I'm terrible finding it on the spot, but I'll find the table, and I can suggest some more specific language, so thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more while we're...
Sure, yeah.
I'm sorry, were you going to ask? So I just wanted to ask, there's some language that's contained in the plan referencing, you know, tiny homes, micro-units, ADUs. What does that mean to staff? And how does that align with future or pending imminent, you know, activities around how the city could support that, since we don't currently?
Yeah, that, so that ties into, first thing that comes to mind is zoning code changes. So our zoning code, for example, I think only defines multi-unit and single-unit. And so there's, it's either you're in or you're out kind of thing. And so to have a more granular set of land uses that accounts for some of those sizes would be one thing to address it. You could look at minimum lot sizes in certain parts of town that would better facilitate those types of housing units. So I think there's a whole, like, regulatory structure that could help with that, yeah.
And I guess part of what I'm asking is, as that language is inclusive in the whole and its entire, or, sorry, in the plan in its entirety, and adoption by council of the plan would inform work plans, that's kind of a component of what you were talking about before, right, where that's a specific kind of action that's contained within one of the strategies that would be a near-term effort, that through the support of, you know, an endorsement from the commission to council about adoption of the plan, that would be an example of something that you guys would tackle as an immediate action?
It would be a goal for sure, yeah. I mean, I would envision, again, goal, aspirational, staff resources, all that stuff, but I would hope to bring a package of zoning code amendments to planning commission and city council. And so, and to be able to have the trajectory to say, hey, you talked about this six months ago or whatever, and this is just building off of that versus, you know, the one-off things that come your way more often than not, so.
Commissioner Basket?
I just wanted to reinforce what Commissioner Choi said in terms of, this is a lot of work to take on, and that's, and we haven't even done the comprehensive plan yet, and a big work program will come out of that. So I hope that staff can accommodate it and be successful, or add staff, if that's what comes out as recommendations from the comp plan. I have two specific questions. One is related to current events. So the discussion in the recommendations about changing the rule about two unrelated, more than two unrelated individuals. Currently, there's a bill going through the legislature. Do you know what the status of that is?
All I know is it's still in committee, I don't know which committee, but...
Okay.
In the, what is the legislative session, in May 8th or something, yeah.
If it passes, it will negate the need for that, because it'll be a statewide rule.
Yep, yep.
And the other question I had was, in the strategies, there is a recommendation for a commercial linkage fee, or I think it says explorer commercial linkage fee. And I always wonder, and it also does a good job of acknowledging that this could be at counter to the economic vitality strategy. So I think it's good to hold those both in the same place. I was just wondering if any of our other Boulder County cities have a commercial linkage fee?
Don't know.
I know the city of Boulder has one, fairly recently adopted, is my understanding, but I don't know, I don't think we've researched if any others have one.
We'd probably need to know that at some point to understand... I, we'd probably need to know that at some point to understand the competitive issues related to that. While I'm speaking, though, I would like to say that I, I really like the report a lot. I think that it is, um, well-organized and articulate, and it gives you a way to look back and forth between things. So, um, I commend the consultants and the staff input that went into creating this.
I, I just wanna reiterate that. I, I did read through it. I think I might have found a typo, I can tell you.
I found about four, four or five typos.
Fire away with those.
Yeah. The, I, it looked to me like they were part of, probably from formatting, you were missing around with it, but, um, I, I just, I was really impressed with the amount of work that went into this and, and the, the thoroughness of it and the creativity of the recommendations, because I think it's been a hard, it's a hard nut to crack. And I was really struck by some of the findings, you know, about the, the twenty-five percent or seventy-four percent flip, you know, the, the unaffordability issue here, which we've all been feeling, um, and the loss of families with young children. And I, and I, I just, I think it's such a problem here that we have been hiding from for a little while. I mean, those of us who've been here a really long time know we came here and it was, you know, really affordable for families with young children, and, um, this is a tough problem, and I think there's a lot of really creative ideas in here, and I'm, I'm, I am duly impressed, so nice work.
But just to follow on to that, I think they're really state-of-the-art recommendations. So for example, one of the things that struck me was, uh, an acknowledgement that, of the difficulty of mixing uses within the same buildings. So for a long time, development has been on a kick where we required commercial on the first floor, and it's so depressing if you look at the housing that's next to Lafayette City Hall. It has vacant, vacant, vac, they're all vacant, and it's just a, a really tough nut to crack. Perhaps if a building, a, a mixed-use building was an infill building, which is already a commercial street, you might be able to make that happen, but I think it really drags down the development and creates an even worse lack of eyes on the street and, um, activity when that happens. So I, uh, was, I'm impressed with the recommendations.
I, I'm interested to see what, um, how that goes in, um, downtown Superior, because they have that whole block where they've done the exact same thing.
Very interesting, yeah.
It'll be an interesting test to see how they do.
I'll just chime in and pile on at the, at, at this opportune moment, too, and, boy, I couldn't agree more with my fellow commissioners. I'm just really, um, thrilled with the, I mean, to, to me, this is like a really, like we've just been sort of sharing, I think this is a really serious issue for our community, and I have the fortune of being able to kind of see the vision, mission, and value statement over here on the wall, and I just keep thinking like, this is, this is a really, the gravity of the housing situation, it kind of, to me, sort of threatens the livability of, of, and the vibrancy and the health of our community. And I, I was just, as I was going through the plan, I was just struck, like, this thing is meeting the seriousness of our situation in, in a really just hard-hitting and good way. So again, kudos to, to, to you all and to the, I, I feel like we are, um, I mean, like, it does feel like experts have put this stuff together and thought about it, and I, so anyway, just, just piling on.
Nice, thank you. Any other content issues that were hot, burning? Um, everybody who had a type, everybody who had typos, you get free unlimited nachos this evening only. Yeah.
So another content one, I'm poking at deed restrictions, um, and I, I'm not sure what discussion happened previously at the planning commission. So, um, I guess the first question would be, has, using some precedents we've seen in, say, Summit County about, um, housing, you know, not just income, but the occupant needs to be living and working in, you know, a given area, has that been considered and previously discussed?
Yeah, I forget, I don't, we, we don't have anything on the books currently, right, with a preference?
No, I've heard, we've heard that comment, though. I don't think it's explicitly in the plan, is that, um, the idea that, um, yeah, if you're, if you're living and working within the community, um, it's part of the deed restriction that you get a priority. I've seen similar priorities, for example, with Kestrel, our, our latest deed-restricted project, those who were impacted by the floods had priority, so there's, anyways, I think we could consider that, if we wanted to consider that as a policy to give preference. I'd have to vet that legally and make sure, but we could take a note and maybe add that before City Council as a recommendation.
It's a, it's a deep rabbit hole, and there's a lot of discussions to be had on that sort of thing, but I think we should be having those discussions, given the gravity of what we're describing and trying to help promote, you know, um, opportunities for people of all backgrounds and occupations to live here. I, I think that's something that should be considered, and we should have that discussion. So I'm not advocating for, yes, we need to do this, but I think we at least at the city level should be having that, and so maybe that means having it be its own action under, you know, I don't, I don't think as written, it's included in Action two-point-six, um, because it just says deed restrictions, but specifically the deed restrictions as it pertains to, you know, one of the occupants living and working, you know, within county or city, whatever, whatever the, the appropriate bounds is, I, I think it's something we should strongly consider.
Yeah, I think we could find a home for that, um, in multiple places, and, and it is a model, like in resort communities where they can't, you know. We do in the plan call for, as it relates to the inclusionary housing ordinance, we call for looking at upping the area median income range. Currently, it's, I mean, a portion of the units have to be sixty percent or below AMI, and I think they all have to be eighty percent or below AMI, is that right? Which is well below, as we just talked about, the workforce housing price point. So I think contemplating raising the AMI up to like a hundred and twenty percent or whatever we said, um, in concert with something like what you're talking about, could make it, really strengthen it.
Yeah, and, and maybe AMI covers you in that regard, um, but, you know, but I could see some circumstances where it isn't, and I, so I think we should strongly consider adding that as, you know, language, either under Action two-point-six or its own action.
Yeah.
So at least we have that conversation as to whether that's the right thing to do, whether we leverage just the AMI deed restrictions, or whether we include some sort of, um, you know, occupancy based on, you know, where, where people are working, you know, as has been done elsewhere in Colorado.
Chair, I have one more question.
Yeah, please.
About content as we're going along. Understanding and, and appreciating the kind of enormity and scope of everything that is in this guiding document as a, as a plan, um, how do you feel about the either specificity or generality of the language for the three goals?
Yeah, I mean, they, first thing that comes to mind that I'm personally happy with is they're all measurable. Increased residential development is measurable, affordable housing is measurable, we need to do a better job of tracking the deed-restricted units. Diversity of housing stock is very measurable, too. Those are all data points that we can track. And I think you, they're, they're very broad, yes, but they can encompass a lot and be used for a lot of different purposes. I think it could be really strong, um, as we're looking at even like land use cases and development proposals with the comp plan. So, um, yeah, I, I think, I mean, we vetted the heck out of these things, um, and they, you know, these plans always have ambiguous language, but I think it, in our perspective, it strikes a right balance of being usable, but not being so rigid.
In, 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 in continuing to kind of roll with that idea, right, and we'll just use the first goal as an example, increased residential development in Lewisville, as you said, right, that's something measurable, we can say whether or not there was an increase or not. Does that, as it's written, and, and, you know, that kind of just pertains contextually to how a lot of these things are, are phrased in the plan, does that, as it's written, both allow for the idea of increasing appropriate residential development in Lewisville and/or increasing residential development opportunities in Lewisville? Are they mutually exclusive? Are they both contained in it? Does staff feel comfortable that, again, as a very broad and encompassing guiding document, that this allows the flexibility after recommendation and adoption, that you could develop work plans to tailor, you know, either appropriate residential development or residential development opportunities, both under that first goal?
So I was reading the goal as you were, I was trying to multitask, was reading the goal as you were explaining the goal. I, I do, I think there could be, I mean, what I'm hearing you say is, you know, appropriate, right? Is this, is it, not just, not just increased residential for the sake of residential, appropriate to neighborhood context, you know, the values of the city and things like that. I think that actually could be clearer in the goals that, you know, we're not, if, if that's kind of what you're getting at.
And, and I'm not necessarily trying to wordsmith this and give you specific recommendations. What I'm more getting towards, right, and it goes back to my initial question of, if this is adopted and now you say, hey, we have all of these things that we're supposed to do, not only do you have the resources available to be able to deliver on, on these things, but are these the right things, the way they're crafted, that you want to inform your work plan, you know, or is there something else that is more nuanced or maybe more general? It's more of a, more of a question about, you know, the comfort level with staff as it's written, and if it does support your overall goals after a recommendation and an adoption from the commission and council.
And I personally think you're calling attention to something that I think should, personally should be clear in there, like, you're almost, like, I agree with your edit, even though it's not a group consensus or whatever, and rereading the language, I don't think there's enough in there that, could just be a couple of words, like appropriate, context-sensitive, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good to me as well, thanks for raising that one. I mean, I think it has the potential to make the document, because it is kind of fundamental to it conceptually, to make it more palatable to many, perhaps? So, yeah.
But it's, Commissioner Choi, are you really just asking overall, are these goals, are the, is staff happy with it? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, that's a, that's a portion of it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, if we recommend, make a recommendation and council adopts it, then staff has to live with it.
Right.
And so, you know.
I, I've been, I've been assuming this came, like, that you all have had input into this and are ha, are, are happy with it, but it, that's not the case. I guess we should know about that.
I think part of my question is, sometimes we can't see the forest for the trees.
Right.
Right? And I know staff has been working very diligently and long time on this, and, you know, sometimes we work so hard at refining, 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 that we kind of miss something that could have been involved, so this is just a probing question.
It's, it's a, a tremendous value-add to have a fresh perspective to look at this, because you relook at something a hundred times, and you see something like, like, hear something like that, and you're like, duh, just write in appropriate, context-sensitive, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, for example, look at page twenty-one, there's a typo in there.
You wanna email, you can email them, I'll find, yeah, however you wanna do it.
Commissioner Baskett and I will email you our, our typo, our typo finds.
Page twenty-one, noted.
There's a, there's a, there's a paragraph that starts with like a zero, and I think there's just some words missing.
Additional content-oriented thoughts, concerns, input, what's that? You're leaning back. Great. Any else over here? We do have just, what, two people listening this evening? Three? Um, so if anybody who's participating by Zoom, if you wanted to use the.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, do we have a card? Did you wanna, did you wanna participate in the meeting, or are you?
No.
No? Okay, great, thanks, appreciate it. Anybody on Zoom wanted to use the raise hand function and, uh, share your?
I just saw one.
Three minutes of thoughts, all right.
Thought tomorrow, Krantz, yes, okay.
All right. Great. Uh, why don't we begin with Ms. Krantz? If we can unmute her, and then also the clock, just to keep it quasi, quasi official rules.
Hey, am I unmuted?
Yep.
Oh, great, yeah. Um, thanks for including me in this discussion and for all the great, um, commissioner questions and comments. I have so many things I would wanna say, but, um, I think my first big comment is that I really would strongly suggest replacing the first goal. I understand why that goal is there, that we need more housing, but I don't think that more housing for housing sake, sake is really an objective. Um, we identified problems and we need strategies to fix the problems, and that goal is just too broad. What is the problem that more housing is going to fix? Lowering prices, providing workforce housing? I, um, I noticed that Eco Northwest also did a very similar housing action plan for Bainbridge Island in Washington, and they have a really similar problem as to what we do, except for their median house price is one point two or million dollars or more, and they have similar problems, and I really liked the goals, they didn't call them goals in the, in the Bainbridge Island Housing Action Plan, but they called them guiding principles, and just increasing housing wasn't one of their goals. Um, they really, they, um, had other goals like diversifying and stabilizing housing, building more affordable housing, and, um, especially, um, providing housing support for certain populations that really needed the help. So I, I think that we should really consider eliminating that broad goal of just, um, increasing housing, and I think that we need different measurements than just, you know, saying, okay, we added a hundred units this year. I don't think that in itself is really going to help Lewisville. As a matter of fact, I think it might hurt Lewisville and, um, and just put the burden of new housing on existing residents. I, I would also like to suggest that one of the goals be, um, that the second goal be modified to say, to include the twelve percent goal that we've agreed on, and I think we should, I would go as far as to say that we should, that the second goal should be that we want more affordable housing at a minimum, meeting the twelve percent that, um, we've signed on to with the county. So I think that a lot of the specific actions and strategies, um, follow up after the housing goals. So I, I would think that, um, it might be, if it's possible, we should do more community outreach to agree upon the housing goals. I think that when, when I went to the October open ha, open house, I felt like we jumped right into the strategies, and, um, we didn't really know what the goals were. So if the goal is more workforce housing, um, maybe, you know, we should have looked harder at the strategy for deed restrictions. Um, I think that, um, like Vail did that, they were offering, um, funding to support, um, to pay owners so they could have deed restrictions to set aside housing for workers. I think that, um, I thought that was a really cool idea, and that's something that Lewisville could do as well. So I feel like we need a meeting for, more meaningful goal, like, if we want workforce housing, um, we should do like what they did, um, like what Eco Northwest did for Bainbridge, which is to actually do a survey of the employer, uh, do an, do employer surveys to find out where and exactly what kind of housing they need. So I would just like to suggest that we modify the goals, um.
Great, thanks.
Um, if it, if my data time.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have the benefit of seeing the clock. You are, but you wanna just.
Okay, that's great, okay.
You can wrap up.
Thank you for.
Thanks.
Taking my comment.
Well, if you, if you wanted to wrap up there, you can go ahead. Great, thank you. And then, next person on Zoom? Okay. All right, um, with that then, maybe a little bit of additional. All right, okay. And please go ahead.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, this is Cindy, uh, Fidel, I'm a resident of Ward Two in Lewisville, and I haven't prepared a comment, but just listening tonight, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, if you look at, um, our community character survey from a couple of years ago for downtown, it says, "The comprehensive plan references the livable small-town character of Lewisville together with values such as diversity, walkability, and family-friendliness." So I don't think, you know, we should be throwing out livable, small-town character in our vision statement in the housing plan and in the comp plan. I think that's really important. So we need quality of life for our current residents and employees. We have an infinite market of people who wanna move here, so we can't build our way out of that. No matter how much we build, there'll still be thousands more people that wanna move here. So I think we need to look at what's reasonable to reasonably and sustainably expand our housing stock, including using, um, other options besides just constructing new units, so, you know, deed restrictions, um, say people like myself that own a smaller, single-family home, that someday when we're not here, we could put a deed restriction on it, so it could be a relatively affordable unit, maybe for a school district employee or something like that, I like that idea. And just consider, as you increase height and density, also increasing will be traffic, crowding, noise, pollution, crime, parking, and so, i- if we put use by right for downtown for height and density, that's gonna greatly change our downtown. that's going to greatly change our downtown character, as well as throughout the rest of the community. So, I think that's what I have to say right now. I might have more to say when it comes to city council. But I think we need to be reasonable. And as Director Sakara said, what we're talking about now is more growth than we've seen in a long time. So, we need to be really careful about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually found some data, going back 10 years, that I can share with you. I wasn't very accurate, so it's definitely worth looking at here. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Give me a second to figure it out. Uh, it looks like I'm disabled on sharing. Did you make me a co-host? But, but basically, I have some data going back to 2010. You know, there were years where we were doing well over 200 units a year. I think over that time, we had about a 15% increase. But let me just get the data up. So, let's see. Okay, it's really hard to see, so I'm probably just going to read it out to you here. See if this works. So, so basically, we go back from 2010 to 2017, when things really leveled off. And we basically go from 7,899 units. And I'd say this is when D-Lo, North End, and Steel Ranch were really building out. So, there's quite a bit of housing development. So, we go from 7, 8, 9, 9 to 2017, we go to 8, 8, 7, 0. So, there were some years, excuse me, where we were, you know, well over 100, you know, over 200 units in, in one year. And then, once we kind of leveled off in 2017, then we were doing, you know, it looks like 30-ish units per year for the next several years after that, leading up to 2021. So, here's the actual data to put some perspective on that.
Great, thank you very much. Any additional thoughts, deliberations? I, I do think the plan does speak to, and will help us develop these other alternatives, deed, deed restricting, that sort of thing. So, I, I think we're in good situation with that. I was curious if anybody else had any other thoughts. I, I mean, I guess, trying to roll in the concerns that the goal of this is to maintain quality of living for the people who are here now, that's important. It's just language. But I think it's potentially important language. So, if you can maybe find appropriate places to weave a little bit of that in, that may help people appreciate the goals even more.
We'll, we'll commit to doing that before bringing anything to council.
Great. Any other? Yeah.
One last parting comment. I like the iconography used throughout the document. Would you be willing for the icon that's meant to represent the diversity of Lewisville's housing stock of the three different shapes to maybe add three different colors to the three different shapes?
Let me make sure I understand the...
Goal number three, right?
Yeah, the three shapes. Yeah.
Three shapes. Make them three colors, too.
See if you can do something there. I like that. Yeah.
Beautifully nuanced. Nice.
Thanks. That really is my last comment, I promise.
Oh, no, no. If it comes in, pops in your mind. Yeah, Commissioner Mullin.
I might offer one thing, too. I don't, I don't have the, the whole document pulled up in front of me, and I didn't print out the whole thing either. But I'm, I'm, I, just hearing some of the public comment, I guess, I feel like this plan has the potential to exactly reflect the vision, mission, and values of the city. And I don't know if it's worth, I, I, I don't know, maybe that's already even in the document. But if it isn't, I don't know if it's worth kind of making a linkage there that, I think the goal of the, of, of the suggestions here are to keep the town livable and have a good small town. And I think that's what we're, that, that would be the goal of it, too. So, anyway.
I think it tracks with the comment as an overarching kind of lens, and we could further tie it, you know, because the comp plan, in part, will be developing, updating those vision and value statements. Could, we could tie it to the most recent comp plan and make it cleaner as well. Yeah.
And I, and I think, to that comment, you know, reading through this in some detail, I, I do feel like this is getting away from, I think, you know, previous decades to the comment of just building more housing. I, I don't feel like this is just building more housing. I feel like this document, and again, maybe it could be more explicit in some places, but I do think it, the document is about building houses more, more intentionally to keep that character and to, and to promote diversity of both price points, types of housing, and, and people who can live in them. And so, I think, I do think this addresses that. And so, I agree with Commissioner Mullin on that.
Great. With that, then, are we comfortable in moving forward with a recommendation? So, are you hoping if we just do a voice vote? Do you, or do you want to roll, call formal, or?
I think, I think voice vote's totally fine. Yeah, however you all want to do it.
What's that?
However you all want to do it, voice vote's fine with us, I think.
All right.
Would you like a motion from someone?
I think we included a resolution that you could consider, too.
Oh, okay.
Either way.
Oh, that was a resolution.
We're, yeah.
Just throw all the options on the table.
We're just trying to confuse you with options.
No, that's great.
Yeah, you can choose to do that as you see, see fit. Yeah.
One, one quick question, too. I mean, is it, do we, is it just helpful to recommend our support for the, the current plan? Or is it helpful to add a statement that says something like, "And we urge council to look strongly at incorporating the suggestions or elements of this in the comp plan and in their work plan"? I mean, does that do anything? Or is it just better to recommend just general support of the, the document? I don't know.
I mean, I think those are, could be strong statements that they may appreciate. So, I wouldn't shy away from making those statements if you all agree with that. We could, we could incorporate that language into the resolution. If somebody makes a motion to incorporate, to approve the resolution, and we can add those statements in the whereas clauses and, as an example. Yeah.
Okay. So, that's how many, how many additional to the whereas?
Oh, I was thinking just one that would say something like, you know, "Look strongly at," or that we would, that in our recommendation, we would like the council to look strongly at incorporating the elements and goals and action items from the housing plan into both the comprehensive plan and then also into their, into their work plan, the county, city council's work plan.
Okay.
As a, something like that?
Captured. Nice. All right.
Commissioner Mullin, I might also add one other whereas that simply states, you know, whereas the vision, mission, and values are of paramount importance, you know, and, and should be included or, or considered.
Yeah. I like that, I like that idea. I think it'll serve us well to have that in there. Yeah, Commissioner Mahaly.
So, I, I don't think this changes what my vote would be, but where do we stand with regards to the suggestions that were made for changes to languages or additions to, to things?
So, I'm comfortable with staff having absorbed that, and they'll run with it as you do. So, yeah. Others, yeah. That's okay. You're comfortable with that, yeah?
Yeah, happy to read him back, too. I, I didn't feel the need to ask for official conditions or anything, but your comment about greenfield and vision values and appropriate, yeah, I think we got everything.
All right. Great. Is this, so, is this Resolution Four, then?
It is.
I think it's 2024. All right, great.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great. And a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Four with the additional whereas's that we have suggested.
Great. And a second, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any dissenting or abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. With that, then, we'll move into any planning commission comments, staff comments. It looks like we will be discussing comp plan next month. With that...
Yep, comp plan. We've got a number of land use cases that are near planning commission ready, just not quite ready to announce yet. The one that's continued, obviously, but there's at least two or three others.
Okay, that are potential.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks for the warning. With that, then, a motion to adjourn.
So, moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Look forward to seeing as many of us as possible next month. We'll miss you. Oh, no.